We're at four fifty-nine right now. We have a couple of minutes.
Didn't she ask you when it was?
Yeah.
And you said no?
Yeah. You already heard, okay. I was a Democratic mayor of Stanton. I was the only Republican mayor. And so they really wanted me to represent for the state.
I'll be going to a third, this is in Congress meeting. Third, I will be going into a special closed session at five o'clock. I do have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, we have none from public or committee.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Mayor Council. There are three items on closed session for today. The first is conference with local council and potential litigation. Number of potential cases, that's one. That is public employee profits valuations. The third is conference with local councils, litigation, one case which is in the city residents association at all versus.
Council agency authority member Torres. Council agency authority member Taylor. Council agency authority member Van. Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Warren. And Mayor Chairman.
It will be recessed into a closed session and we'll be back before season. I'm going to call to order the San where the city council meeting, city surgery agency, housing authority, joint revenue, six thirty. Please call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority member Torres. Council agency authority member Taylor. Council agency authority member Van. Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Warren. And Mayor Chairman.
Thank you. Please all join us in the pledge. Colonel Miles, would you raise the pledge mat, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands our nation under God. In this world where there is justice for all.
Okay, we just got out of closed session, so it's objective orders.
Thank you, Mayor Council. There's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, special presentations and awards. Tonight we're going to hear from council, council public affairs, on those data, legislature legislation report and update. Eric.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Councilor Padano TBA. Nice to see everyone again. It's been a little bit since I've been here, so I will get right into it. Starting with the calendar as I always like to do, on June twenty-sixth, the budget was signed into law by the governor, effectively ending the constitutional mandate of asking about this budget. There will still be budget work to be done later in the year. Where it's always tweaking and changing with budget trailer bills, but the majority of it is done capacity. Right after that and through a hellish week of policy committee hearings, the legislature was left to go on summer recess, which is where they currently are. You might see them back in the district a lot right now. We're on vacation. But on August fifth, they will get back in Sacramento. We could be for the final three weeks, almost a month until August thirty-first, until the half of the year. That's about three weeks they have. Like I said, it's gonna, it's crazy three weeks. It's a second year of a two-year session. It is a very compressed schedule at this time. There's about seventeen hundred bills to be dealt with in three weeks, so it will be quite busy. I also want to mention that, then of course, there's thirty days after that the governor has to sign the veto. I do want to mention that this, this is another big turnover year for the legislature. So there's about thirty-five seats that will turn over at some point from members that are turned out. To be combined with the number last year, but it's low forties, I think. So it's a big, big switch in the last two years, having almost half the legislature change. So you're losing a lot of institutional knowledge, but you're gaining a lot of other knowledge from outside. So pretty exciting times when it comes to turnover there. Regarding our state budget problem, we talked about this in Jan, when I was here last, in March, but we didn't have the May revise kind of picture of it. Obviously, it's in a very poor budget position. Governor's January budget was about a thirty-eight billion dollar shortfall. While, you know, from January to May, that problem got about eight point two billion dollars worse, which was anticipated. They did a very low hanging fruit early action plan to get rid of about seventeen billion of that. That was non-controversial, easy to cut, easy to borrow, easy to get from savings. And then the remaining problem they had to address was about twenty-eight point four billion that they were able to accomplish before the deadline on, or before they signed it on June twenty-sixth. So how they did that, you probably remember this slide, very similar to how they addressed the rereaction, but it's a combination of clever accounting tactics and using reserves. A lot of reductions in general fund spending, a lot of programs cut, a lot of haircuts. There were some pretty heroic efforts by local government apps, groups to save some pretty important programs on the government side, local government side, including regional reaction planning and the multi-family housing program. The hope that we are to invest in our housing infrastructure in California. A lot of internal borrowing as well, and then shifting between accounts. The Green House Gas Reduction Fund became a popular special account to be able to build some climate programs. Following up on our conversations, extensive conversations regarding the public safety legislative package, which has been a very big priority of the legislature and the governor this year when it comes to combating retail theft and crime as well as drug use. I could spend thirty minutes on this slide. I will not. It boils down, I just want to make sure that the council of it boils down to the themes of the package, which probably will pass and be signed into law, which are making sure it's easier to arrest individuals who do commit retail theft crimes. The officers no longer have, potentially will no longer have to be a witness to the crime in order to actually prosecute it and arrest or prosecute it, as well as allowing to ensure attorneys to work together across county lines to be aggregating different theft amounts to that felony or grand felony area to be able to put some guilty into some of these existing laws. As well as SB nine oh five by Senator Weiner, which closes a loophole in crime right now that requires your car be proved it to be locked. So if it does get broken into, it's not a crime. Yes, there was a legal loophole where if your car was unlocked and it was broken into, it was not crimes. Yet it proved it was locked, which is very difficult to do. So both that loophole. So a theme of making sure that the existing laws are working and working around the edges there to contrast with what we'll talk about in a bit of what's on the ballot. The biggest news in the last month or so is tax care protection, government accountability act. So at this point, everyone can probably see all the information about it. But on June twentieth, the California State Supreme Court removed the tax care protection, government accountability act from the ballot. So the rationale was, while wordy and creative, it really boiled down to two things in our opinion. It was, you want to amend the state constitution, you can use the valid admission process the way they did. However, if you want to revise the state constitution, you have to do a constitutional convention, which is very difficult, has not been done a long, long time and nothing ever, it would not happen. So the state Supreme Court's real ruling was that this was in the revised zone of the constitution rather than amended. So it was a big, big win for the government, a big defeat for the California Business Roundtable. We've put a lot of money into it so far, but takes it off the ballot. And June twentieth was quite strategic in the timing, in that day you don't have enough time to qualify something else. So it is dead to the year. Good news, in the complement measure, as you know, the legislature, the governor passed, sorry, the legislature passed ACA thirteen, which was an counter to the Tax Care Protection Act. That was also going to be on the ballot. Because it was removed, they pushed this one to twenty twenty-six to get off this ballot as well. It's possible it gets removed completely, but for now it's just off the ballot. Another one, I know it says Prop five up there because that is now the name of it, but it used to be called ACA one, another one that we had talked about, which would make it easier for local governments to bond or have special taxes related to public infrastructure or public housing. So right now it's a two-thirds vote threshold, which is very difficult, as you know. They would move and lower that to fifty-five percent threshold in order to make it more dear to pass at public level and maybe even with school, school bonds. What the legislature is able to do, their bonding threshold to go up to fifty-five percent, the local government's at sixty-six. So they're modifying that. The big difference between Proposition five and what ACA one had is that Prop five removed the provisions of ACA one related to special taxes. That's very important because right now Prop five only says bonds. The bonding authority is from sixty-six percent to fifty-five. Also included originally special taxes. If you want to do a special tax for something, you're saying it would only require fifty-five percent. That was removed. It wasn't pulling as well as the, as the bonding. So they removed that to ensure that this was potentially going to pass. Couple, you know, around the edges here, if you're interested, you know, any local official voting to put it on their own ballot won't be allowed to do it for work funded by that initiative, right? Can't be benefiting from it personally. State auditor is in charge of any performance audits and overview. And then does require some training for citizen oversight commissions to make sure that they know what to look for in terms of fraud and misuse of funds that you want to be. The rest of the ballot in November, not as crowded as we thought it was going to be initially. We thought it was going to be extremely crowded. There's about ten issues on there. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I pulled out the ones that are probably the most important to local governments. And I'll go through a couple of them, but Proposition four is our climate bond. We talked about the best, the ten billion dollar climate bond. It is probably one of the more collective bonds I've ever seen on the ballot. It is, climate is a very large term, right? Anything to be true climate, you look hard enough and put it the right way. So it is very much water, say drinking water, sewer infrastructure, water recycling, but also nature-based solutions, wildfire resistance, deep heart creation, perpetuating. There's a lot of, a lot of different aspects to this bond. We talked about Prop five. Prop thirty-three repeals Costa Higgin's Right Control Act. So it gives general law cities the ability to have right control if they wanted to. Not required, but just right now you're not allowed to, even if you want to, but it is the option in the future. And then Prop thirty-six, which is the district attorney-backed valid measure for rolling back Proposition forty-seven and the retail theft crimes, drug crimes related to it. So Prop thirty-six is the more aggressive version of the legislative package when it comes to addressing this retail theft and crime. District attorneys have written it themselves and, you know, give themselves some good authority to be able to address it the way they want. And then, like I said, measured not qualified tax protection. Switching gears quickly to some good news out of DC. I don't believe this was, this happened after last time I was here, but these are the three projects we submitted to your legislators. More community project funding on the House side, congressional direct spending on the Senate side. This is the same lot of money that we've been using the year mark funding for Orangewood Marquette, as well as last year's funding that is escaping me right now, but I will remember in a second. So we submitted all three with helpful staff. Good news is the Community Center Senior Center project was included in the House Subcommittee Bill at a lower amount of five hundred thousand. That, as of right now, I, I would say that that's, I'm pretty confident that's going to go through RASIS. So it's hard to bank on it, but I would say, I would, at this level, pretty clear that the five hundred thousand dollars to that project is probably going to stay in for the end. So that's good news. Has a long way to go still and probably won't be done until next year. But as of right now, we're positioned very well, especially on the House side. On the Senate side, we submitted the same projects to Senator Butler and Senator Padilla. You can see Senator Butler and Padilla supported both the Orangewood pedestrian bridge project and the Community Center Senior Center. And then Senator Butler supported the neighborhood termination project. Senate is handling their Subcommittee Bills later this week, actually. So it's very possible we will find out if they did the project on the Senate side this week, before they break for hours. And then just a quick grand update, in the last couple of weeks and months, we've submitted an act of transportation program grant, working with your staff. Orangewood Complete Streets Project, and then we are currently working with Zenin and the team on a new community access group. With that, I'm completely, any questions?
We do have a deficit of, as I said, considering. So if your proposition, uh, proposition is going to be, how would it go out? That's going to be about another sixty-nine million. How is that a lot, or is that just down?
Yeah, that's down the line, so that's not this budget year's problem. So the budget, the budget that they addressed, I think your question was Prop one, six point three six billion dollar bond just passed in March. How to finance that? It's done as you go, so as the money goes out, they bond for the money as you go. That is not, those bond repayments are not this budget year's problem. That will be a future budget year problem. You'll have to pay, just like any other takeout loan, get to pay the interest, pay the principal, all that good stuff. So that will be in future budget.
And I think I had a chance to briefly send you an email regarding tax credits versus the ones that the federal government is able to supply. I know that some of our local folks are quickly against that at a legislative level. Could you just give me a quick update, just for my own part?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, at the federal level, the Inflation Reduction Act, a big piece of legislation passed by Congress and signed into law by the president, gave tax credit incentives for energy projects, local energy projects, infrastructure projects. There's a coalition out there asking for the same tax credit incentive at the state level that they already have at the federal level to complement each other. That package needs to be done legislatively in California. The original attempt to do that earlier this year failed largely because it's a tax credit you're giving at a time where we have a bad budget balance. It's hard to give away money in times like this. So there is a coalition trying to advocate to get that back in the last three weeks of the session to be able to pass it this year, get a tax credit incentive for local energy projects. Discussions are ongoing. It's not dead yet, I would say. They have some powerful allies now that are supporting it, including the chair of the right committee. So it's a matter of whether or not they are able to get everyone to the table and get everyone on board in the next three weeks. It's a possibility.
So I understand that I teach you, because someone is carrying that.
She is not committed to carrying it. She is supportive of the concept, what I've been told. No bill has been written on it yet.
Okay, and so basically what it does, like local agency like ours, let's say you have a power plant, and you have backup batteries. If you were to increase the ability to store usable energy for the community, there might be some tax benefit because I know there's federal benefits. Is that kind of where that works?
Yeah, I think, I think the coalition is trying to get state tax code to be your federal tax code to be able to, I don't want to say double them, but to be able to get tax incentives to support the state end for energy projects like your current.
I think that's a part of the limitations to how we can handle these tests.
Correct.
Even though ecological, they would be a good.
It's a debate for sure.
Anything else? As always, thank you. We appreciate all your advice, especially on all the evidences.
My pleasure. Thank you. Have a good night.
You are moving on. You can send calendar. Is there anything that needs to be brought by staff? Any questions by anyone? Okay, if that is okay with everyone, then we'll go with the recommended action on all IDs. On there, everybody opposed, everybody abstained, moving on. Okay, we're now in the public hearings. So I'm going to take ten A first. This is an ordinance, one one twenty-four, amending section two oh point four, oh, oh, three oh, and the standards for change to the standards for alcohol sales in mixed-use rape areas. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this at this point?
Again, this is for item ten A. Please come to the public center. We do ask that you please speak your name, and then you do have three minutes.
This is good?
Yes, it's good. My name is Jonathan Hanun. I'm looking for section ten A. Person sitting next to me was Rebecca, my sister, and her husband Abraham, and they'll be partners in our market we're trying to open. Also, my wife is on the Zoom call. She's in New Jersey right now. She's a third year medical student. There. So I just want to let you know that I'm here for any questions you have for me. And then I thought maybe I can give you a little summary of what we have on mind.
Yeah, if you give us a summary of what, basically an overview of what you'd like to see, if there's any changes made, and then we can ask questions. I think that'd be great.
Okay. So, so we would like to occupy the bottom floor of the Verb apartment complex. Sixty-two hundred square feet, in which we, we would like to open a high-end grocery store. Something, something like a Sprouts or. And so, I mean, unlike those markets, we won't have a, any, like a butcher area or a bakery, but we will bring in fresh produce, we'll bring in fresh baked items from local bakeries and have packaged sandwiches and salads. For the alcohol, so we already had a hearing for the conditional use permit. And so they put some conditions for us to work with. And some of those are that we'll only be able to sell liquor bottles that are full size seven hundred fifty milliliter or larger, so no small sizes. And none of the alcohol in the store, including the beer, will be accessible by the customers. So usually you would see beer in the refrigerator and customers could open it and grab their beer. It won't be like that for us. Everything, including wine, will all be either behind the counter or in lock cases. Yeah, so the reason I believe that it will, it will do well and serve the community in that area is the nearest grocery store is the Walmart Neighborhood Market. But we're inside a luxury apartment building, which, you know, a studio apartment is like two thousand dollars up to like, I mean, forty-five hundred or something, or a two-bedroom. And I believe that a lot of the, a lot of the residents who live there or in the newly, like, being built Cloudhouse Apartment Building and across the street, the Town Hall. I believe that they would prefer a more high-end market. So I think, especially for the people who live in Verb, where they can just walk downstairs and grab whatever they need, I think they would really benefit from all of that. Yeah, I don't know. I think that's the main idea. Of course, there's a lot of details and I could go on, but I think. Yeah, so we're, we're working with the design team to, to change the layout. We first had a layout for the store and it looked more like a normal grocery store. But now what will happen is, so there's the cash registers and immediately behind that will be a wall of liquor. And then that counter will, will go around and where the liquor shelves end, there will be refrigerators. So that will have the wine and the beer. So every, the customers will be on the other side of the counter and they'll tell us what they would like. So we will then open that.
Are you going to offer delivery to the people of VRV?
Yes, so we will be on the delivery apps for anyone in the area. And I think we're going to do something specific for the people who live in VRV. I was speaking with the owner or the manager of the property, Cole. To see, he wants to give me like a, one of those key fogs so that we can unlock doors within the building so we can hand deliver it ourselves instead of having to out.
Thank you for that. I just have a couple of questions for Chris.
Thank you so much. So Shavon, would you like to present the staff report?
Yeah, I just have two questions. Then you, I know, I read your report. I just, I just don't want to make sure this is one spot. Number two, make sure that whatever is on the board of the meeting, otherwise it's all there.
So to answer those two questions, is that totally non-sponsoring? So what the code on the amendment is for you tonight, pushing to establish provisions to allow alcohol sales in all mixed-use areas. So it's not just this one location, this one location is part of the application, but it would be all these projects. So it wouldn't be an existing commercial tenant in an overlay. But we do have a staff report for you tonight. If you're ready for that, we can go ahead for senior hundred.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and members of the audience. The item for you is a request for consideration of ordinance number eleven forty-four amending section twenty point four zero zero point zero three zero. PB Stanton municipal code pertaining to standards for alcohol sales in mixed-use overlay areas. So the zoning, zoning code amendment request was submitted by our applicant, Joe Hanun. And in order to update regulations for alcohol sales in mixed-use developments, the municipal code currently does not allow alcohol sales in proximity to residential uses, with some exceptions, none of which apply to mixed-use projects. This essentially limits and prohibits the sale of alcohol in any commercial tenant space of a mixed-use development. Considering this type of development includes residential component above a commercial use. Unfortunately, at the time these provisions were established, it was not anticipated to have both commercial and residential uses within the same property. As part of the amendment process, on June nineteenth, the city's planning commission held a public hearing on the zoning code amendment in addition to a conditional use permit, which you heard from our applicant. The planning commission deliberated and unanimously approved and recommended the ordinance to City Council for adoption. As a point of reference, the applicant's overall request, like conditional use permits, will allow the off sale of alcohol with a type twenty-one and type eighty-six is licensed in conjunction with the proposed Neighborhood Market located at one two seven three six, Beach Boulevard. The planning commission approved the conditional use permit on June nineteenth, contingent on the City Council's adoption of the zoning code amendment. The proposed Neighborhood Market will be located at the ground level, as we discussed earlier, and.
and, um, located at Verb, and the commercial tenant space is outlined in red match for you. So this slide for you displays the additional text to be incorporated into the code section, uh, which includes further explanation of a bona fide eating place, uh, and establishes the alcohol cells, um, that alcohol cells are permitted within mixed-use development projects, subject to a conditional use permit, of course, and existing operational standards applied to alcohol sales. And as such, uh, staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing for ordinance number eleven forty-four amending section twenty point four zero zero point zero three zero, standing municipal code pertaining to standards for alcohol sales, uh, in mixed-use overlays and areas, and set for a second reading. And this includes staff's presentation.
If, uh, there is under municipal use permit, right?
Are any future uses would require municipal...
So we can be more restrictive than that ordinance if it necessitates itself with a future...
That's correct. Yes, we can.
So we have one that would probably not work to compel other units with the public. They would have their, see, process to show... Like, is this a little bit of a...
We had, is there a place to eat in there? Do they have a, like, a, are tables and chairs where you can stand and eat? By the market or in that area?
Oh, in the proposed market?
Yes.
Uh, don't believe the floor, uh, floor plan without any tables or chairs. No, it's mainly to go.
Okay, yeah, thanks for having me go.
Mayor? Great. Um, on the delivery side, are we going to be delivering alcohol? So are you going to follow up on, they're going to be making all that, or how are they doing all that?
Yes, uh, in addition to the produce or, uh, food items, yes, alcohol would be, uh, optional items to be delivered, and yes, they, their staff would be trained to, um, uh, verify that individuals of age, um, uh, sure, there's, um, ways of scanning the, uh, the jar's license or identification to, to prove that that's an actual...
That, that's a provision that Department of Alcohol Beverage Control of the state, so they would lose their license and they won't check.
What's the percent of alcohol sales versus group value?
Uh, we did set a, um, conditional approval, uh, when the CQB was approved. I don't think I have that resolution in front of me at this time. Uh, but we did say a condition of the amount of alcohol that could be, um, within the marketplace. I think it was fifteen percent of the overall board area.
We can confirm any of this, Mike.
I, I think that's important because we're running, trying to become a liquor store, because especially we can be accessible to the public, which I still feel, hey? Uh, if that's the case, uh, you know, having another liquor store in the same street, um, is something I think that, uh, I would find to mention, like, especially in the fact that it is a residential. A reason that original ordinance we drafted was because we definitely have it here residential because of the impact of, uh, drivers, DIUs. But fortunately, maybe most of the stuff will be in house, so that would...
Go ahead. Parking, is there places to park? If somebody wants, wants to park, I've seen in front of Verb, there's...
Yes, uh, so the, the development does have a parking structure, um, and there's a total of twenty-six, um, designated spaces for non-commercial spaces.
The entrance is at the center of the, of the building, so right around where the... Yes, there. There's open designated spaces in the warm room.
Is the ownership support, supporting this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, do you want to just confirm that there's no other speakers for public comment? And then go ahead and close that public comment section?
Yeah, I was just...
Yes. One moment, sir.
Okay, so I think, um, I think I would like to see if the ratio was, if square meters was...
We're looking, we're looking at, we're looking at, right? It gets buried in the resolutions.
I see you get my, you know what?
So on, uh, on the resolution number nineteen says, it reads, "The market shall occupy a majority of the floor area for food products packaged for preparation and consumption away from the store. Alcohol shall not occupy more than fifteen percent of the market's floor area." And then additional number twenty, "Alcohol must be stored in display refrigerated shelves behind the cashier in the areas that are only accessible to employees and provided to customers upon request."
If you look at some of the beverage stores, they are got a lot of them. So I think that's the way life is right now. Also, I think it's nice because it's ready to decrease the amount of traffic, uh, in and out of there, especially if somebody goes out to go to the library or something. So it's more of a, what we talked about is overall able to be on, which means... So I, I, I'm okay with it. I support it. Anybody else having a... Yeah. I was waiting to see what you had to say.
I hope there's one more on the people who have, if we can check this. Do you have any other members of the public who wish to speak on only item ten A? All right, Mr. Dibs, please come to the podium, speak your name, you do have three minutes, sir.
Um, members of the council, uh, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. I am glad you're looking at new developments, including this one. Uh, I would just add something for your consideration, which I will also try to address during a regular public comment, which is, we do have a crisis of youth of things, and so when you have these projects where they're going to be selling alcohol and so on, uh, it would be great if, if not on this project, at least on future ones where you could earmark some money for a much-needed youth advisory commission to help bring awareness of, of the importance of fentanyl and the importance of other things, and to avoid, uh, digital, digital, uh, cyber abuse and so on. So that's the only thing I have to add is, it sounds like a great, good project, but if it's possible to, I'm going to be addressing the council later about the importance, like, which I've done in Garden Grove as well. We had a youth commission, uh, for over twenty years there, and provided Youth and Government Day and awareness of, uh, drug and alcohol abuse, and trying to educate parents and students. And so this kind of a component maybe could be, either if not with this development, maybe future ones where you could earmark a little bit of money to help support a youth commission. And I'll just say that I kind of got rolling on this back in two thousand nineteen, when a student, a fifth grader at Hazard Elementary School in San Ana committed suicide allegedly because she was being bullied on Instagram. Since that time, I have tried to get this word out to the community in different ways, and I started a website called dibsdigitalwellness.org, which has, uh, resources for parents, parents and, and for students to help protect them from the cyberbullying. And, and this website includes the advisories from the Surgeon General on this issue. So that's the only thing I have to add is, perhaps, either in this project or future projects, earmarking a little bit of money to help support a youth commission for Stan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item ten A? Okay, according to current hearing, bring your back to the council. I'll leave it. Fake roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion by Mayor Forte Warren, a second by Councilmember Ford. Um, chief of roll call, Taylor. I'll now proceed with the roll call vote, Councilmember Bannan. Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Forte Warren.
Yeah.
And Mayor Shoppard.
Yes.
Thank you, I didn't have to.
Okay, go get one. I run ten B, this is the extension of an interim position, so the city council, the city of Stanton, I have a, with, with sections three-six, nine-three-seven, and six-five-eight-five-eight. This is how they can extend the temporary moratorium established on any new medical services under SNC section two oh dot four hundred dot two A, and extending a temporary moratorium on any expansion of employment and operation of existing medical services under SNC section two oh dot four hundred dot two O for ten months and fifteen days, bearing in study and preparation of an update of the city's municipal ordinance, zoning code, the general ordinance, being that from signal. Who's getting this?
Good evening. On July ninth, twenty twenty-four, the city council will adopt an urgency ordinance in response to requests for medical services in commercial and mixed-use area. The zoning code definition of medical services includes methadone clinics and alcohol treatment centers. While these facilities provide a valuable service to the community, there is a potential that they can have negative impacts on the vulnerable populations that they serve. The zoning code currently provides minimal regulations for these uses and needs to be updated to better address potential danger. Government code section three-six, ninety-seven, authorizes the city council to adopt an urgency ordinance relating to the preservation of public health and safety. Additional government code section six-five-eight-five-eight, authorizing the city council to adopt interim ordinance to prohibit any use of the legislative bodies, planning missions, or the planning department, is considering or studying warrants to study for reasonable time. The city council utilized this authority and placed a forty-five minute moratorium on medical service uses under SNC code section two oh point four hundred point two hundred. This emergency ordinance requires a report on actions taken in a year than ten days before expiration of the urgency ordinance. This report was provided to the city council as part of the agenda package, allowing staff's efforts to review all existing known regulations regarding some medical uses, research of municipal codes from other jurisdictions, preliminary conversations with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and identifying potential medical code, potential proprovision for, uh, negative, to address negative impact on sensitive population. Additionally, staff has prepared and proposed a ten-month and fifteen-day moratorium on the establishment, enlargement, or expansion of medical service uses under section one point four hundred. Due to the complexity of this matter, staff requires additional time to study the issues related to medical services and similar reasons to determine the best way to protect the global health, safety, and well-being of the community and the sensitive population that they serve. Staff believes it is critical to establish a ten-month and fifteen-day moratorium while this type continues and new ordinance is prepared. The city council is asked to hold a public hearing, state public comments, and consider adoption of the ordinance for you. This includes staff's...
Thank you. Next question. Um, I am going to now open this, this is public, so, right?
Yes.
So it can be, is there anyone from the audience, our citizens, that would like to speak on behalf?
Members of the council, citizens of Stanton, my name's Nicholas Dibs, and I'm a teacher, educator. I would just say, when it comes to this issue of licensing for, um, for this type of, of, of business, that it is important to have some sort of a component of, and if you can't do it in this one, then in the future, but, uh, again, earmarking money for prevention, drug abuse prevention, alcohol abuse prevention, uh, internet abuse prevention, awareness to help protect the children and the parents, and awareness for parents to help educate the public as to the harmful effects of different drugs and alcohol and so on. So if, and, and, and providing some money for a youth commission to help advisory commission to help, uh, reduce dependency on type of thing. So that's my own suggestion at this point. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item ten B? Have any city members responding?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
Go ahead, closing the public hearing and bring it back if you have questions. You have staff? We can, but we already have, we had this and we approved the other one. Um, let me just kind of go into it. I appreciate what Mr. Dibbs said, and I think he's spot on. But you got to realize that right now, we have no control, our enforcement, our way and twist to regulate. This is all done outside of our city. And so the problem is, is some of the things that happen in these poor places to try to help people end up being more of a negative impact, aren't on the people that are trying to get help, but also on the community? So that's basically why we're doing the study. Find out how to make them more effective, how that we can have a better way in which we can enforce, make sure everything is legal, and to make sure they're truly getting help. That's probably good. So that being said, anybody else have any comments? Is your move motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Bannan, a second by Councilmember Ford. I will now proceed with roll call vote, Councilmember Bannan? Yes. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Forte Warren?
Yeah.
And Mayor Shoppard?
Yes.
Sir, item ten B passes.
Here we have no unfinished business. We're now on new business, item twelve A. This is to consider opting into a national opioid settlement agreement with Croesus.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, twelve A relates to the various settlement agreements that the city has, uh, seen over the years with opioid distributors, manufacturers, such as, uh, Cardinal, Johnson &amp; Johnson, uh, the Cassin, and Mary's was broken. These have flowed through the, the city council, um, and other cities across the nation. It has, over time, amounted to approximately twenty-five billion dollars in settlement funds to alleviate the impacts of the opioid crisis. Uh, this latest settlement is against Pervert, I believe, which is a weather distributor of the new weights. Um, it's worth about one point four billion dollars in multi-states settlement. Uh, uh, an amount of that would go to the state of California, it's about a hundred and twenty million dollars, and that would later be reapportioned to other entities, including the cities and the county. Um, typically, at these types of settlements, the city has a lot, a lot of their amount of the settlement proceeds to encourage, to support their programs, alleviating the opioid crisis. Um, that is the separate provision today as well. Part of the issue of how much this city would actually receive depends on how many entities opt in to the settlement based on formulas that have been given as a support fee. It's like, it's about twenty-four thousand dollars over eleven years. To take that money directly would, uh, would require the city, the accounting requirements and reporting requirements back to state, and so, uh, it is simpler and effective to allocate that money to the county. Um, so the requirement to opt into the settlement agreement is due by August twelfth, uh, so that's just around the corner. We expect that additional settlement proposals are going to be written as these can take a long time to go through the whole process and, uh, deal with the multi-state agencies. And so the other request is this agenda item is to refine, uh, according to standard opt-in of learning response, uh, that I'm happy to answer your questions.
How much would the city yield?
The amount of the city may get really depends... The amount of the city being made really depends uh, on how many agencies opt in. So some states or some cities, mainly cities and smaller agencies may not opt in uh, based on the formulas. We're estimating about twenty-four thousand dollars over eleven years or so.
Interesting. And does it still like that we would be able to hire someone to manage that for us with the mining? Or is mining just a?
The uh, there's a couple options the city has. One is to allocate the funds to the county in Orange. And Orange would uh, do the county, do the reporting, but they would use the money for their opioid projects, right? Correction. The city has the option to take the money directly and uh, use that money for the city's own programs that are allowed under the settlement protocol. However, they, the city would didn't be obliged to do all the reporting they need to do. Historically, the city has allocated those funds.
And reading through those, it was kind of silly because the amount of money that the city would ultimately get is about how much it's going to cost us to do the expenses reporting that they're asking of the city to do this. So I thought that staff is very wise. He's like, let's keep this headache to the county. And hopefully those cities do, maybe the county can do something easy. But um, I agree with you.
Yeah, I, I agree that we need a um, a lot of county to afford these funds and the money. Not enough of them. Leverage the funds on that collective pool. It's that it probably isn't. It's totally out of this company. I remember um, private G P had uh, opioid and that county event in Pirates City Hall. I thought that was really good. So to encourage one of those types of events on outreach. Especially maybe have a issue on the streets with this problem. There's a way we should come to class that. The best way to do that is to mention that our work is purpose. It's huge effort, especially.
It's interesting because out of this whole opioid issue that we have here, um, I feel like we're the most involved in the orange town of the city. You know, um, we had an issue with doctors striving way too many opioids. Some of them went into the streets and they sensed that everybody was going to get addicted from it. So it's unfortunate that we won't be getting a lot more across our city so that we can go ahead and uh, you know, help getting those programs available for people to help. But, you know, it's such a small number that we might as well.
If this ever happens again in the future, there's another consideration. And I agree with everybody, but there's another consideration. It's unfortunate that whenever we don't get money at the local level, we never get what we expect out of it as far as services. It's a giving, it's a giving, okay? And we sit around and complain about it, which is we justify it. However, there is an option where we could take just maybe our neighboring cities, collectively take that. And then that way we would make sure that the money that between maybe eight cities that we have could be used. We only pay one service, uh, reporting for all of this. And maybe there'd be enough to make a global program. Just something to think about in the future.
If I can just provide some additional information to some of council's comments. So um, the county has been focused on education and outreach this year. As the city attorney mentioned there are anticipated to be additional settlement funds. Um, the county has assigned a representative to ways with each of the cities that are contributing our allocation. So they've made a series of videos and public service announcements in multiple languages. They are very um, open to coming back and doing another regular town hall. They, I know they also purchased Narcan and gave that away for free to parents and other events. Um, interested community members. And in speaking with the county representative, I did mention the council's feeling that our streets are very in need of support. So they were interested in looking in the future at potential street medicine collaborations with these funds. And then separately, um, to the mayor's point, that there's a small group of small cities. We're actually having a meeting tomorrow amongst the city managers to see for future opioid settlements. Would it make sure, would it make sense for the small group of regional cities to collaborate our funds together to get something that's more customized to where our community?
Okay, um, I think that um, part of the other thing that the government considers to make sure that um, we do get some services out of this, I think we'll at least owe that. Um, you know, we even got twelve thousand dollars worth of services. I also would recommend that we make sure that all of this information gets to the public capabilities authority for the cities of Western Street, Stanton, and uh, Valley. And that we get a chance to really use the advertisement, public announcements uh, to the fullest extent on child three as well as our state websites. Okay? Great. Anything else? Okay, so the action on this one is uh, recommended action on this is one, two, and three. Is there a motion? Okay, roll call, please.
All favor? Can you post? During that, I intend passes.
Okay, this is a professional services agreement with S P Plus for parking enforcement services. The City of Stanton will consider entering into a professional services agreement with S P Plus for parking enforcement services.
Thank you. Good evening on all, may I members of the council? The city's Public Safety Services Department provides parking control services based on the California Vehicle Code and the city's municipal code throughout the city to improve traffic flow, enhance safety, protect residential and business areas, encourage local behavior, and enhance the community's quality of life. Common violations include illegal parking in restricted areas, overtime parking in commercial areas and residential neighborhoods, seventy-two hour parking restrictions, and street sweeping violations. Current enforcement activities are primarily focused from Monday through Friday from seven AM to five PM with parking citation payments ranging from forty-one dollars to fifty-seven dollars. During fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, just over ten thousand citations were issued, generating approximately three hundred thousand dollars in revenue after accounting for citation processing and collection activity. The city has experienced challenges in providing continuous effective parking control services in the evening and early morning hours. Other cities within Orange County and beyond that have faced similar challenges have implemented partnerships with third-party service providers to supplement and enhance existing services. To augment the city's current parking control program, staff is recommending it turn into a professional services agreement with S P Plus for a pilot program. S P Plus is recommended after the completion of a competitive procurement process based on the city's purchasing and contract dialogue. After review of five proposals and three interviews and cost negotiations, S P Plus was determined to be the best qualified firm. S P Plus currently oversees parking operations and enforcement activities in over eighty locations across thirty-four states. And references were checked with the cities of Fullerton and Glendale. Under the pilot program, the city will maintain all current parking control employees. City staff will continue to provide services Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. While S P Plus personnel will provide services Monday through Sunday from six PM to six AM, utilizing an S P Plus vehicle, uniforms, and equipment. The S P Plus team will consist of our regional manager, senior manager, project manager, supervisor, and parking enforcement representative. S P Plus utilizes an issuance protocol based on verification, data entry, and documentation with a goal of a less than one percent void rate in all citation issues. The S P Plus vehicle will be a white Toyota Prius hybrid with clear marking. The proposed hourly rate of forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents includes payroll taxes, workers' compensation insurance, uniforms, supplies and tools, liability and vehicle insurance, data processing and background checks, the vehicle, the light bar, fuel, repair, and maintenance. The total compensation for the proposed agreement is two hundred thirty thousand eighty-seven dollars with an initial one-year term from July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four to July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. S P Plus anticipates the post-award transition period to take approximately three to six weeks. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five adopted operating budget includes sufficient funds in the Save Streets Together campaign to cover the cost of the proposed agreement. However, based on estimated activity, staff believes the contract will reach, will reach one hundred percent cost recovery over the twelve-month period, negating the need for any additional funding. Staff will review monthly activity, and if for any reason at least eighty percent cost recovery is not projected, will consider terminating the pilot program. That concludes my staff report, and myself and representatives from S P Plus, Ernesto Renea, Vice President of the Municipal Services Division, and Sean Abadissian, Senior Manager of the Municipal Services Division, are available to answer any questions.
Yes.
Please approach the podium.
Thank you. Um, we have six management positions. How many people are you going to have in the field?
Uh, good evening. Uh, we have scheduled a full-time position.
In order?
Uh, one full-time position and one part-time position.
Okay, so we have six management, six managers with six levels of management. Do we have one and how people live in cities?
Yes.
So that's what we contracted for. So it's not, their, their administrative management is not dedicated to the city of Stanton. So their regional management team oversees all the contracts within a certain period. They're not focused full-time on Stanton. They are, they are as part of our overall S P Plus team.
And so how many people in part do we have?
In our current internal staff. Our classification is code enforcement officer slash parking specialist. So I believe we have two full-time and two part-time. One full-time and two part-time.
So we have three.
Two F T Es, since two of them are part-time, I guess three one.
And how did the hours of leave work compared to the hours?
So we will be covering seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. S P Plus will cover six PM to six AM, seven days a week.
Six PM.
Correct.
Is that enough?
It's uh, it's a pilot. So I think it's enough for what you're trying to accomplish, uh, which is to make sure that you get our return on investment on, on, on the project itself. Uh, I think it's sufficient for, for what you're looking to do at the beginning.
Could you tell us some of your successes in other public agencies that you work for? Like, there's probably a lot of them.
So we, we do the same across the, the.
Sorry, can you just unmute and pull the microphone?
Oh, great, okay. Great. Um, we do this across the state. Uh, we have several clients that are municipalities within Orange County and Los Angeles. We work closely with L A Metro as well. Uh, we do this for the city of Glendale. We do this for the city of Fullerton. Uh, two weeks ago, we got awarded with the enforcement for sweeping services for the city of Orange. Uh, so uh, more of the success stories that we've had are come along with being able to support the police department, aside from the revenue generation. Uh, we're an extension essentially of the city. Uh, we work very closely with other agencies that are not necessarily doing enforcement. We work closely with the city of Vanahang. We work closely with the city of Santa Monica. Uh, our client is L A D O T. Uh, so we have uh, the, the meter collections that we do for them. Uh, so our realm of expertise, um, uh, is broad when it comes down to parking. That's mainly what we do. Uh, enforcement issues, one of those components. Uh, the success stories that we have, uh, come with the people that we have, where people first. So everything that we do on the streets comes with as an extension, as the city and the police department. So our people are very trained, very well-trained. Um, and customer service first, ticket second. Uh, but the revenue generation that we've seen across the board for all these different cities have exceeded the expectations of our client.
Is there an evaluation period on the probationary or are we doing, we doing an evaluation of cause of effect?
Absolutely. And that, and we have the same provision we have in all of our contracts for terminating the contracts. But absolutely, we will be working closely to monitor the outcomes and results of our cooperation. And we'll be working with our P I O to make sure we start communicating to the community. A lot of individuals have recognized that the city's enforcing in the late evenings and early morning hours and are taking advantage of, of that.
And my last question is, it says with two additional one-year extensions. Um, is it, should, I mean, those extensions need to be, that's not for sure.
Correct.
Evaluation and it has to be uh, used rate.
Yes, so this is a standard provision for most of our public service agreements. So there's an initial original term that the council approves. And then if staff is satisfied with the services provided, then we come back to the council to exercise an option to amend the contract to extend for what we said in the original agreement. So this allows us a little more flexibility rather than starting the whole RFP process for satisfying the services. The extension in the original agreement and the original term, you should strive not to exceed five years. Total term will be three years.
Um, as you mentioned, um, you also contract with a lot of large cities, right? Um, my worry is that because we're such a small city here, we might get overlooked. Uh, what can we do to make sure that, you know, we stay with a strong partnership if we decide to afford this?
We have dedicated individuals for the area. We have um, a senior supervisor that oversees the operations in Orange County just for enforcement. We have dedicated individuals to each place. Um, there's no bigger, small city for us. Uh, we work with all types of cities. Uh, given idea, uh, we have renewed our contract with the city of Santa Monica three times now, uh, with the last extension uh, that was done without RFP. Uh, we've done the same with the city of Glendale. Glendale, they gave us a, a, a five-year initial term with five one-year extensions. We actually just got a five-year extensions about three months ago. Um, so the, the story kind of like tells by itself, we're very dedicated to what we do. Uh, Chan here is in charge of operations for our enforcement unit. And, and like I said before, uh, our neighbors in Fullerton can probably attest that we're doing a great job for them there uh, on the customer side of things. Um, we have also increased our revenue as cars, uh, citation generation goes. And our, our, um, our presence also has helped decrease in uh, issues that are happening during certain hours at night. Just because we drive around with our flashlights on, uh, we don't, we don't play, uh, police officers, we don't play security enforced, uh, but our presence has occurred for the behaviors that were happening during those hours.
Who else? Thank you very much for your attention. And we really appreciate both of you taking the time to introduce yourselves to us. Uh, that means a lot to say like, thank you.
Uh, thank you for having me.
Yeah, bring it back. Anybody? Motion? I go ahead with the recommended action.
Can I give that second to uh, the voter? Please a motion by Mayor Shocker, is it all favor?
All right.
Can you post? During that, I intend passes.
Okay, we're now moving into that, uh, item thirteen, our communications in the public. At this time, members of the public, we address the City Council, successor agency, and housing authority regarding any items within our subject matter jurisdiction. Provided that no action indicated. Remember, you have three minutes and the clock is right there. And uh, if there's any questions that you need answered, you will be getting a card from city staff and we'll be more than happy to address any questions that you have. So we'll begin first of all with Pablo Sierra, please, come on.
Yeah. Is, is this Spanish or English?
Don't feel like I give it up.
Oh. I don't understand, pardon me. Oh. Este, esta noche, buena noche. Este, yo vengo a poner en interrupción. Yo vengo del, mi nombre es Pablo Sierra. Digo, en la parceria. En el último le dije yo que quede, que solamente estoy ocupando yo. Hay mayor presencia de de las personas que no vienen ya y si me quieren o preserven este apartamento atrás, al lado. En la noche no nos deja dormir. Hemos estado muy estresados porque aquí se ve al lado, no sé qué están haciendo. Y familia pues están muy estresados. Podremos ir eso posiblemente, no sabemos si nos han armado, eso no lo sabemos pero sí sé cuál. Señorita, la cuarenta parceria, viene ocupando a queremos este más seguridad y más presencia policía para Para que, para mayor protección, también porque la verdad estamos muy estresados. Esperando que muy pronto no movemos, pero queremos estar en esa tranquilidad. Es todo lo que he hecho con él. A ustedes, ya.
Gracias. You're speaking, right? Right? Yes, right here.
Uh, they didn't want him.
Y dona hija hizo una carta para regalar a ustedes.
Ámelo, por estar. Don, asking them, they call the citizens, not the sheriffs.
Y llamando la policía porque cada vez que nosotros llegamos, sabemos si necesitamos más pertenencias en una área. Porque es importante que ustedes se llamen para que nosotros... Entonces, por favor, llama, please. He llamado, pero normalmente no, no veo que hay nada. Esto es un paraje.
Um, me puedes dar una explicación más rápido en qué pasa cuando llaman a nuestros sheriffs?
Ah, normal. Y pues dan una vueltecita ahí, normal los corren y... Yo pienso que mejor que hayan perdido cuanto menos o cuestionado. Que se salen de ahí cuanto menos.
Basically, the sheriffs don't do that.
Councilmember Torres, can I please clarify? When he mentions mentioning the vacant unit, is he referring to the vacant unit that recently had a fire attached to the garage? Or vacant units that are adjacent to occupied?
Hay, también, pues unos días atrás, también nos llamamos y vinieron a ver porque nos llevaron a entrar. Se llevaban muchas cosas ahí, entonces hicimos un recuerdo. Pero no vemos qué va a pasar con las cosas, se perdido. Una manera para recuperar cuanto menos lo que tanto nos ha costado también operar.
El edificio donde está todo la gente ahí, está en el edificio cuatrocientos? O cuarenta edificios?
Ocho mil nueve cuarenta, pasé.
Muchas gracias, vamos a ver todo lo que nos daban este deseo y vamos a buscar.
Okay, next we have is... Just one, please, please.
That's good. Um, so I'm also a resident of the city. I'm just here to talk about the homeless issue that we're facing with some of the homeless or trans needs going into the vacant buildings that are, well, that some of the families there. Most of the homeless are from the railroad tracks that are near those families on the side. There's a, there's a community in there that we hear screaming for families and everything. So that we put together from the railroad tracks. And we've also heard parties, they have music and just stuff going on on the railroad track. But they took notice of the vacant apartments and so now they're starting to go inside. And unfortunately, they, two weeks ago, last week, they saw some gentleman, a gentleman that just stopped. And so, and so we're just asking that we could have a little bit more security. As for the base, we do call the police. I had on my security cameras, I see the police just show up, they don't even come out. That's nothing I'm talking about your opposition, I know. There's a, I mean, you guys might have restrictions, I don't know. But all I see is they come in, stay there for like fifteen seconds and move on. And it's like, we're like, whoa, where's our security? You know, it's like, uh, yeah, it's frustrating, yes, yeah. And like I said.
So these are units that were previously occupied and tenants moved?
Yes.
And now they're being taken over by?
It's the one that, so the building that burned, where the garage burned down, where they were, I guess, they were doing like a chop shop or something like that, where one of the trucks burned down, the adjacent building, that's the one they started going there. Which is where that gentleman is. And well, the only one that's left.
And your address is?
Uh, my address is eighty-eight ninety Pacific Avenue.
Eighty-nine Pacific?
Uh, eighty-eight ninety.
His address is here. Oh, eighty-eight ninety.
Yeah.
Are you A, B, C, or D?
Uh, C.
C?
Yes. Yeah, oh.
And his property is?
Uh, eighty-nine forty-four. Eighty-nine forty, C.
Eighty-nine forty, A, B, C, or D?
Uh, A. Yeah, A.
A, so he's A. Yeah, he, that's the address. You'll be hearing that from us. We have your information here on the card. So give us an opportunity to take care of it, okay?
Yes.
And first, we'll be working with our sheriff's department.
Yes.
And try to give some help in the situation.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, otherwise we'd never known. So we appreciate you taking the time to come down to that.
Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you, come any time. Okay, our next speaker will be Mr. Nicholas Dibs, please.
Mayor Schaubert, members of the council, citizens of San Antonio. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I became a teacher in nineteen ninety-two, did my student teaching at Milliken High School. At that time, we didn't have cell phones. We have a crisis today, the opioid crisis. We have other fentanyl, drug abuse. And then what I tried to mention before, digital screen addiction, which causes sleep deprivation, increase in youth suicide. Suicide is like the second leading, second or third leading cause of death among young people. The point is this, as I look at the wall behind you, it says, "Community Pride and Forward Vision." The forward vision, it should be, I would like to propose that you include in your forward vision, having a youth advisory committee or commission of volunteers who would be teachers, educators, business leaders, and others who can help. Because our youth also need mentoring programs, internships. Your city is a little unique in the sense that the students, you know, two-thirds go to Garden Grove Schools and one-third goes to Anaheim Union High School District. But the city itself is a unifying force. As they say, someone once said, "It takes a village to raise a child," and the city should be part of that village. So I understand your city, and correct me if I'm wrong. You used to have a youth commission, but you don't currently, or a youth advisory committee. But I have suggested this in Garden Grove, in Irvine, they have the host one. In other cities, and the youth advisory committee would also include, or could include Youth and Government Day, opportunities in the summer for students to do internships and so on. But when I grew up and when I became a teacher, we didn't have the problems we have now. The parents today don't quite, don't always understand that the youth are experiencing something different than they did because of the social media abuse. So that's why I started this website, dibsdigitalwellness.org. And I just have basically resources, free resources, from the Surgeon General, from savethekids.org, protectyoungeyes.com, streenagersmovie.com, different, socialemotionalcause.com. And then the suicide prevention number and stuff. This is just, this is out there, but there needs to be more awareness. There needs to be more opportunities in your forward vision to not only warn parents and students of negative things that are going on, but give them something positive, which would be, what we did in Garden Grove, and I worked on it for a while with the school district and the city, and they brought back Youth and Government Day back in two thousand eighteen before the pandemic. And fifty or sixty students got to pair up from high schools with city managers and stuff for a day. So I just want to ask you to put on your agenda, if two of you would, to look at this. Can we have a youth advisory committee? And if the volunteers wouldn't cost anything? So maybe put that on the agenda and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Dibs, for getting questions from Mr. Dibs. Okay, appreciate you bringing that up, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address us at this time? Any other written communications?
Mr. Mayor, we have them.
Okay, are close, they have people in hearing. We have no written communications. Okay, Mayor, council initiated business. Again.
Just wanted to say I went to the best of brothers by OCFA Center. And it was wonderful seeing our firefighters there getting honored for their courage throughout the year and with another wonderful presentation this year. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, that was a great meeting.
It was. So a couple of weeks ago, I guess it comes from the beginning now, I got a chance to attend grand opening of Orange County Sheriff's Department.
What's the rest of it? Communication Center.
Really fantastic tour. They've got a lot of new things there and it's all in one location. They have two smart officers, commanders, and then an IT there. And I got to go with our own decent chief of police here. And that comes shipping around. Sure, part of that's what we do.
Very great, so I put your care fifteen, fifteen A, so I do have a connotation. I do want to let you know that if you did not go to the movie night last night, you missed out on a great time. I had multi-flavored rice frisbees that I was able to obtain. And they told me that they were all gone before the movie started, so I better try and get more of this shit, if I can. I know staff like, so we should bring that shit. All right, we're now at sixteen B. This is council agency and attorney-initiated items for a future meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead, go.
Been quite a while since we've had a presentation by the sheriff's department. And so I was hoping that, especially now that we have the Boise decision, if we could have a presentation by the sheriff's department and with a focus on the strategies and objectives that they'd like to reach according to the Boise decision. And also an overview of how things are going in San Antonio. It's been a while, so I think it's time to have a presentation.
Something like that, isn't that a staff-type thing? So you'd probably have to bring your back. What do you think, Mr. Dibs?
It's impossible we can do that for a presentation that cannot matter where there's the overall coverage. So all in what's not to be clarified.
I think that's the easiest way to do that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, great, thank you. We'll be looking forward to that. All right. Future study session. Okay, go ahead. Petricia fifteen D.
Mr. Mayor, for you, we have item fifteen D, which is the council-initiated item, discussions regarding protection of the city's critical infrastructure. At the July ninth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, Mayor Schaubert requested that this item be adjourned for discussion. Mayor Schaubert is requesting to discuss review of recently passed legislation and the measures needed to be taken to ensure for the protection of the city's critical infrastructure. Schaubert.
Thank you. Yeah, we did have the Boise decision recently, which gives us a little more latitude on what we can do. I do not want to spend a lot of our tech, staff, time and energy on this. However, there are some existing ordinances in California that have been very successful in protecting infrastructure. Alls I'm asking is that I can probably have most of that information assimilated. If they happen to get it to the staff, they can kind of put it together and then I'd like to present it for your consideration at a future meeting. Okay? Anybody have yet?
Very, very quickly. I just wanted to have a very quick question. So if we were to do this ordinance, right, would it give us any more extra ability to enforce? Because, I mean, critical infrastructure is critical infrastructure. I mean, it would make sense that we already have the ability to, you know, protect those, you know, facilities. Is there, with this ordinance, does it give us more ability or?
Yes, it would, because it does give some parameters. It's not going to, it's going to be, you should, you should, so. I will, I will give you that and outline, then we can take it, give me the opportunity.
So, so if they're in critical service areas, we'll just get them to?
Well, I think, I think the main thing is to, is to identify those areas.
We will have our structures outlined.
Here's, I'm talking about things like drainage canals, rural right-of-ways, power plants, things like that.
Because I see our code enforcement doing that, right? There's still a bit of the users that actually need this.
Well, that's why I'd like to make the presentation. I appreciate it. I brought back some, it won't take a lot because we already have some existing ordinances. They're very, they're going to go into great detail. And then we'll be able, I'll be able to answer all these questions if we go through. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I think team E, city council initiated item, discussion regarding the creation of the social post ordinance. At the July ninth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, Mayor Schaubert requested that this item be adjourned for discussion as well. Mayor Schaubert is requesting to discuss the creation of a social post ordinance pertaining to fireworks. Mayor Schaubert.
Again, this is going to be not staff-driven. It shouldn't take too much time. About a year, I think, or so ago, I had the opportunity to serve on a statewide commission on fireworks. There was input from fire chiefs, city managers, sheriff's departments, things like that. And there are a lot of new technologies and also ordinances that people have adopted that make and help keep a safe and safe environment alive. I would like to make a package, get it together, get the staff and then bring it before you with your consideration. It ranges from everything with local accountability to drones, to radio chief to issue citations, as well as putting some responsibility on the people that, the vendors that sell fireworks, not necessarily charity groups, but the people that provide the fireworks for the city. So I think it would be good for us to look at it. As you know, every quarter to wine, we do have some concerned citizens. I think it's our responsibility to look at what options we can to make things a little bit. Yes.
I feel like kind of sheriffs, how we develop the cities and the municipalities and use the social post ordinance, use drones, and they were able to seize a lot of people. So they would.
Their programs are, actually, it's kind of embarrassing. You said that because way back when I started looking into it, they were just trying it for the first time. However, there were a couple of cities that were doing it. The guy, I'm giving a short story. There was, the way one city did it was they had a drone flying open. And as soon as it identified illegal, they called the ground crew, knocked on the front door, and they got a ticket. So there's a lot of options out there. You know, the thing is, is...
They had a ordinance passed to each city that just possession. They would get a ticket and they would pass it to all of them. Apparently, it would work a lot. But some people didn't get all the other.
Yeah, I think, and I'd love to have input from any ideas that you guys have. I think it's good that we all look at it. And then I say too is that, you know, anything we can do to keep San San, you know, we really don't have that much participation in the charities that we have. But the ones we do, we got revenue. So we might as well try to make a little bit of... So we might as well try to make a little bit better for everybody. I think it's also important area that you know that, what we come up with, we might want to share with our neighboring cities. Because we're in the middle. And I remember one night, John Moore and I were sitting out there with this videotape. And we saw this wonderful display, and staff was quiet, but all our survivors here were in place. So I think whatever we come up with, we might want to share with our other fellow councilmen.
When they go out of fireworks, so the person who told me this, you know, there's a group of other cities that were fighting real fireworks. You know, they're just weren't, they started to engage other cities. My idea, okay?
Yeah, and I agree with you, I don't want to be punitive, I think we can avoid that by being communicating in the word out, letting people know, hey, this is the way it is. And I think the better education job you do, the better it's all work. Okay, guys, get that. Are we okay with losing? Okay, looking along. City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, I have my.
Okay, items from the city manager?
A reminder that we will be start the next meeting on August thirteenth, so our next regularly scheduled meeting will be August twentieth.
My sky sheriff's department, please.
Excuse me, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In June two thousand twenty-four, Stanton deputies responded to nineteen hundred calls for service, which is an average of sixty-four a day. Without being signed calls for service, deputies observed five hundred and sixty violations of law after the recording. Deputies also conducted three hundred and thirty-four patrol checks throughout the city of Stanton. Deputies made twenty felony bookings, eighteen misdemeanor bookings, six warrant bookings, and four DUI bookings. Our Stanton border deputy issued two hundred and five traffic citations as well. Our deputies also handled all criminal activity in the month of June. We had two attempted homicides, two rapes, five robberies using different types of weapons during the act. Seven violent assaults, one arson, thirty-one burglaries, seventeen thefts, and nineteen stolen vehicles and six vehicles recovered. Stanton Investigations had a very busy month as well, which included investigating two shootings that occurred in the city. And they had a total of one hundred and sixteen total cases assigned, fifteen cases are open and sixty-three have been closed. Highlight Investigations is currently working on a home invasion robbery involving three suspects with over two hundred thousand dollar loss. And the suspect was located with lock cameras, and the case is being further investigated. Stanton Special Enforcement Team had over two hundred contacts with the homeless, zero services received. Nine parolee probation contacts, but resulted, they had the results of eight, excuse me, six felony arrests, eight misdemeanor arrests. One pimping and pandering, seven field interviews, and one human trafficking case, and six referrals to investigation. Our response times for priority one calls during the month, priority one was four minutes, seven seconds. Priority two, nineteen minutes, thirteen seconds. Our priority degrees were approximately thirty-two minutes, twenty-four seconds. That concludes my presentation, you have to answer any questions.
Did the time stamp of that presentation cover the fourth of July? Sorry, I'm just beginning with.
No, I didn't, this was for the month of June.
June, okay. Looking forward to see how we get about a clock. Do we have information on the fourth of July?
During the fourth of July, we had twenty, twenty-four calls for service regarding illegal fireworks that we responded to. I'll have to double check on the citation portion of it, that was our call volume for those that we received.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Does anyone have any business before we come? Okay, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memorial for our Bob Paul. We all know that Bob Paul was instrumental as a part-time city manager helping us out. He also did a lot of recruitment there, sometimes good recruitment, sometimes unusual recruitment, probably with that. Bob was an avid fisherman, sportsman, great family man. Not only did he help the city of Stanton, but he helped many cities in Orange County with his services. He will be missed not only by us, but also in the leadership of the county of Orange. He did have a very short three-month battle with cancer, which he succumbed. I do want to let you know that I asked the city to put either a plaque or some flowers together as a memorial and present them to his family on behalf of all of us. So that's been addressed at this point. Thank you. Good night, everyone, be covered.